Yeah, it's okay with the police?
All right, we are during that open session.
Jeremy. Now is the time for anybody that has anything that is not on the agenda. Right? Are you with me, Tim? We're in the right spot, okay. And I don't see anybody that wants to comment on something that's not on the agenda. So we will move to council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments. Ken, you want to go first?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Absolutely, definitely, unless you want to hear about the Resource Center, but that's not.
Are they doing anything?
The Resource Center's been very active, but I mean...
Microphone.
Resource Center's been active handing out 211 boxes for people that need food. They've been doing parenting classes online. They are just opening up playgroups for kids with social distancing, and what that really translates to is one family at a time. So we have the ability to accommodate maybe six families for the week, maybe eight tops. But it's a little something for parents who need to kind of have a breather from their children, or from their spouse, maybe, I'm not sure. So we're trying to alleviate some of the stress in the neighborhood.
Good.
And there's online parenting classes ongoing for anybody who wants to jump in and join in.
And I've heard those been going well. I've heard people commenting on them that they're enjoying them.
They're doing well, plus it has allowed us to get Shastina involved, Weed involved, and technically, because they're Zoom related, if there's a family in Fort Jones that missed a class over there, they can jump in on here, so it's working.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have much other than just kind of pass the ball a little bit on, you know, the changes with the COVID change that happened in our community. One of the things that's happening is that their elementary school, it being because it's open, they're getting a lot of new students, you know, and that's an opportunity. But it's also going to be, I'm sure there's an adjustment they're going through up there to get staff and everything together. But it's an opportunity for us to understand that, you know, everything's moving now with this COVID. I mean, not everything, but there's some things moving that if we put our heads together or, you know, start thinking ahead, what's going to happen next, I think we can, you know, and I'm not just talking to the, I'm talking to the audience also, is now's the time to start looking forward. Things are changing, there's changes happening, it really is. In Sam Cooke's song, you know, "Change is gonna come," it's coming. And we need to be prepared for it, be looking forward, looking forward, and put a little love in our heart.
That's a song, too. We'll sing later.
Yeah, please.
Miss Green?
Well, first off, I want to thank the Public Works Department for all of their efforts in this last storm, and I know that they were out 24/7. And, you know, it really, I read comments of, you know, they, I shuffled out and they came back and plowed me in, and they're, I don't know why they don't push the plow on the other side of the street, and, well, I don't know their job, so I don't question how they do their jobs. So I just appreciate the fact that they do. And I'm on a dead-end road, so I'm probably one of the last ones that gets plowed, and I know that, so I'm prepared for that. But anyway, none of them are here, so please pass that along to them. During that storm, somebody drove out into Lincoln Park and spun brodies.
Charlie Bird Park.
Whatever you, I, they damaged the grass. We won't know really the extent of the damage until spring, when we try to go turn on our sprinkler system. But if anybody knows anything about it, I would really appreciate them contacting the Weed PD. And then, just last week, the skateboard park was tagged, so there's painting all over it, and, you know, it's like I tell, and this is why we can't have nice things, because people are tearing them up. So the skateboard park is probably going to be locked up for a while until it can be cleaned up. And then, our solar project is 99.9% complete. It is hooked up and online, and we will be getting the security fence around it. We're on the schedule for the end of March, as soon as weather permitting, of course. And then that project will be complete. I have met with some of the cemetery board members regarding the quarter percent tax we had on the ballot in November, and also talking to community members. I really believe that if we try it again, we will pass. And so we have started our wish board, the things that we would be able to use those funds for, for the cemetery and the Rec District. And so I plan on bringing some of that information each month to let you know what we're, what our plans are for that money. But if anybody is interested in knowing any more about it, they can just contact us over at the community center. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Stacy?
Yes.
Microphone.
Thank you, sorry about that. I did, as I mentioned a couple meetings ago, that I did join the CLC Advisory Board, Homeless Coalition Group. It's based, they've been doing Zoom calls. I've been on one call, and somehow I didn't get the next one, and I kept finding it scheduled again. But it's a lot of things going on out of, we're not South County, North County is kind of where I re- area right now, North County, North County area. There's a, there's a building that they have been constructing to house the homeless. That should be ready, I'm trying to look for the notes here, but I remember I was on, I was just listening on the call, so much is going through. There's so much activity going on, trying to get all the cities involved to know where things are and funds are. And the thing that I captured that was really great was, and I saw it on the news, too, it was about the home, I think it's in, it's in Wariaca, but it's being constructed so it can house people on a certain limited basis, but it's about, like, 30 days is a limited timing. But you have to be clear to come through every time you come through. And they have something to eat, food there, like a microwave or a little stove, restroom activities, and beds. And they let you in at about 5:00, and then let you out about 7:00 the next day, and you only can stay so many days. But I was excited to hear that. This construction, because of COVID, has been slowed down, but it's supposed to be raised sometime this year. But I was thinking like, well, how do we get people from Weed there if they're homeless here? And I haven't talked to Chief to find the members of the people that are here around, because I see people around all the time. So I'm going to follow up more of that on the next calls and ask more information, but I realize that they are really, really together in this thing. Some people, they had all people all over the county that's on board, and I was going to tell you the chair of the person, but I can't see the name here. But they do a lot of Zoom Microsoft calls. So I've been trying to stay on top of that and to see what they're going to do next, and how they're going to keep the cities collected, you know, and the county, because it's for the county. But the home, the building is in, is in Wariaca. It's a big building, I forgot the number they can house, but it's going to open soon. They'll be able to house people that are homeless.
They should be able to access the stage.
Okay, I'll, I'll say that.
Yeah, they can.
Okay, and so that's the only thing I've had, other than just neighbors and people knowing what's happening in the city, asking about different things, that's all, you know. They're always watching the news, and I see different people's responses when they start begging on the city, why are they doing this, why are they doing that? I don't respond, because I remember we got our recent notice, you know, don't go on social media. But people are looking at all the things that we're doing, and they should be, because they should know what's happening in their city. So I'm glad we're being more visible. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I want to add on to Kim's thanking Public Works and thanking PD, because all you have to do is go down there in South Weed on a day it snows. And, and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you, Justin, and all the hard work that they put in. And Steve, too, because I'm sure that the Fire Department doesn't sit there and do nothing. So, so I was on, I'm on the Transportation Committee for the county, and just to remind everybody that the stage is still, at this point, free. They have cut some of the, some of the lines down some, but it's still free. And they are working right now on revamping the stage to be in different areas. It's probably not going to happen until June or July, but somebody's working on that. Ken and I both got an email about the high school students, the seniors filling out their FAFSA forms. And Kelsey Oaks is up at the high school, along with Monica Van Buren. And I'm happy to say that she told me last night, 23 out of our 33 seniors have their FAFSA filled out. And she said Weed High School is usually over 90% to get that done, because...
Can you explain what that is? That stands for?
It's federal aid. Federal aid, Kim, what is it?
For students.
Program.
Yeah, to qualify for federally.
I want to know what the acronym is.
And she said they don't necessarily always get it, but they won't get it if they don't fill that out.
It's free.
Other, it is free to fill it out. And the other one that Ken and I were both on a call is, starting in June, on Saturday mornings from 10:00 to 1:00, at Bel Air Park, we are going to be having a farmer's market. So right now, we're in the process of getting the vendors to come, but it's planned for the, throughout the summer into September.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that different than the one that's next to the Quality Inn Hotel at that park there?
Yes, it will be different. Is that one still going?
I was asking that also.
Do you know, Ken?
Currently, it wasn't in going last year, I don't believe. I don't think they're in existence anymore. So what we have done is attached to a nonprofit, and the Chamber, I believe it's the Visitors' Bureau is actually going to be the sponsor, because it takes a 501(c)(3), and they're going to, huh?
The Foundation.
Is it the Foundation?
Okay.
Chamber Foundation, so that we can do all the paperwork through the state. Takes a lot of permits. One of the requirements is having a nonprofit as a sponsor, and plus, the foundation will be giving us insurance, so that we have that piece of the puzzle put together.
And a question, you said Weed, who's the Weed?
Right now, the Weed, we formed a committee, Farmer's Market Committee, currently consists of Race Track, Yassa, and I missed her last name, I should know, so sorry, Yassa, if you're out there.
Do you want to try it?
Sue and myself, and a lady from Montague, I believe, Kristen Olson, or Kirsten Olson.
Yeah.
Is it Grenada?
Gazelle.
Gazelle, I'll call Gazelle. Sorry, Kirsten.
She used to own the farm up there.
And we're at the point of gathering vendors, is kind of where we are, and the proper permits.
Okay, you said Weed, I know who the Weed was, so organize.
That's fine, it's a good question.
I actually contacted Yassa and worked out, they just got to get me the schedule and the additional insured to reserve the park during the times that they want to be here.
I think we have to name the city, because they own it?
No, you only have to do us.
Yeah, no.
You guys only, okay, all right, good, that'll save a little bit of paperwork.
I'm sorry, there's something else here. I'm sorry, I was looking at my email, I knew I was something about the advisory board for the, they had a webinar that I missed by an hour a couple days ago, but they're supposed to be talking about, which we mentioned earlier, about the vaccine rollout for people experiencing homelessness. So they are going to be giving people that have homelessness the shots in the county. And it's no more specific, it was on, it was February 9th, but there's no follow-up on it. I know I meant to mention that, I'm sorry. But I know, I have a concern, because I haven't got the first shot, and now they're, Siski County and Wariaca is doing the second shot for the people that got the first shot. I was like, wait, is there something wrong with this rollout?
You couldn't go down to...
I called, I can't go anywhere.
They're lacking vaccines right now, from what I gather. I have my name on a number of lists. I just got called the other day for tomorrow at 11:00 or 10:00, I better go look at my schedule, but something like that. But, so they're getting them, as they get them, they're trying to get them out to people. But I, what I found on my search for getting one was that some have not even, over 75 have not received a shot. So there, there's some gaps here and there, but as soon as they get vaccines, then they will be shipping them out.
Because we had that conference call with the commissioner, what is her name, what was his name was? I forgot his name. We were on the call one day, and he was talking, and asked about the shots. Are we as a city going to, are we going to follow up so we can give information to people, so people can know? I know I can call myself, but I just look on the Siski County Public Health website for the chart, and then, so, I mean, is there anything organized that we can do to help?
I would, I would tell people to make sure they call their physician, that they're on the list.
Yeah.
If they think it's just going to happen from magic, I would probably say they're going to be disappointed. So call your physician, whoever your doctor is, and if you don't have one, you can call Mercy Clinic in Mount Shasta.
I called them, they said they don't have any information, and to call the Public Health Department.
Oh, well, they will call, if you ask them just to be on the list, they will start, they're working on the list, but I don't think, you're just a youngster, you know.
I think, David, he has underlying conditions that he should...
Yeah, and I don't know how they're working all of that, to tell you the truth.
They said call the Health Department. I just watched the news, and cities are doing things to help communicate, so I don't know if Weed would take that role.
I would, I would agree 100% with you, there's no doubt about that.
Just don't know what to tell people, and I don't have...
You're telling them to call county help?
Well, yeah, call county or go on the county's website, they have all the data right there. You can also go on the state's registration and get on, with CalVax, I think it's called.
Oh, yeah.
But I would say, make sure you call your physician and get yourself, say, I want the vaccine, get me on a list.
They have no other results or no action, so I'm just waiting.
And I get that, because I was surprised that I got a call, in fact, I laughed when I got a call, but anyway.
You thought it was a prank call?
I thought it was a prank call, but...
Don't put all your eggs in one basket.
Publisher's trust.
Just keep, just keep going at it.
Keep calling, yeah.
Just keep going.
Okay, good, we'll move on to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing with a presentation by you?
Well, I can introduce them. Quentin Gaddy is here today from...
Yeah, he's back there, I thought that's...
He's going to kind of give an overview of the purpose of the hearing and the coronavirus rounds two and three via the CDBG applications, and go over that, so I'll turn it over to Quentin.
Good evening, Council. First, I'd like to give everyone an update on sort of the existing CDBG programs that we have in the pipeline right now. So for the, for the 1920 NOFA that the city of Weed applied for, that contract is currently routing through HCD's legal team, so that's passed the two stages of review needed for that. So we should be expecting an executed contract sometime this year. As for the CV1 program, that has also made it through its second round of review, and has been approved for funding, so that is also routing through contracting. So we're waiting on the pace of HCD's legal team to pump out those contracts, essentially. For CV2 and CV3, the city of Weed has a combined allocation of $233,000 and 300, or $233,306. And so I'd like to sort of talk about the different programs that we're going to be running going forward. We are looking at reloading and beefing up our micro enterprise program. However, because the city of Weed already has that micro program going from 1920, in addition to the rounds one, it may be more advantageous to focus on some other programs based on the community needs. So that's going to be, that's going to be one program that we're going to be basically extending the previous MOU to complete. The second and third programs, we're in discussions with a partnership with Great Northern Services to perform. The second is going to be a subsistence payment program. This is going to include everything except for rent, because the state's going to be rolling out its own emergency rental assistance program, which I can also answer any questions to. But that program's essentially going to allow for people who have either outstanding or are currently struggling with water bills, their internet, their power, sewer, and if their income qualified, their mortgages, if they've been delinquent on those. And so, and this will date all the way back until the start of the pandemic, in March or April 2020, I believe, and will allow up to 12 months of assistance for all, everyone who's qualified. The goal of this program is to set it up in every jurisdiction in Siskiyou County, so there's blanket coverage, and there's no, there's no one who's going to be left out. So say, for example, if someone was in happy camp at the beginning of the pandemic, but then their home burned down, and they happen to relocate to Weed, there's nothing that's going to make them ineligible for payments from either jurisdiction. And it really adds the economies of scale to administering the program. So the EDC would administer that program, but Great Northern Services would actually be the service provider. So they would provide all of the vouchers to everyone, they would facilitate the applications, they would do all the income checks and everything. We, the EDC, would submit all the reports. It looks like Mount Shasta is going to serve as the lead applicant for this program, in addition to the third program I'm going to mention in a moment. So similar to the first program, what everyone would do is sort of, it pledged their funds to that to be managed by the city of Mount Shasta, in concert with us and Great Northern Services, obviously. The third program is going to be a food bank assistance program, and the goal is also to do it countywide. But I have spoken with city staff, and they are exploring the potential of looking at, like, South County Food Bank, which is, which is completely A-OK, too. We can do these programs without everyone, you know, pledging every dollar into each activity, so there's a degree of flexibility. I don't believe you guys are going to be doing the resolutions today, but when you do do the resolution, one of the things you can do is, for each activity, you can set the authorized amount to not to exceed the full allocation you have of 233,306. And so that way, when these programs get up and running, let's say you have more demand in the subsistence payments than micro, you can revise those budgets and move money from one program to the other based on community need. So that flexibility is greatly desired and will improve to the program significantly. I'm waiting on some legal guidance on HCD on how we're going to structure the MOUs for this, whether we're going to amend the first MOU we signed for CV1, and just add different sections for the different programs, or if we're going to have to have a new MOU for each program siloed off. So I'm expecting an answer within a week, and then I can sort of work with city staff on revising any of the resolutions. But if you guys have any other questions on the program or the proposals, I'm shooting here with SEDC and Great Northern Services, I'm happy to answer any questions. Yeah, Councilman Hall?
Thanks. You're talking about activities, like, you're going to have an activities list. How do you get on the activities list, or how's that, how is that created?
So there's actually a whole slew of activities, and counties and jurisdictions around California have been doing different creative ones, whether ranging from, like, mobile vaccine rollouts to parklets for outdoor dining. So there's a wide range of activities that would fall under infrastructure or community, public services, or community development, as long as you meet one of the three national objectives. The main one that's principally used, especially in the state of California, is that it has to principally benefit residents who are considered low to moderate income, which is going to be at least 80% below the area median income in Siskiyou County, which is around $70,000, is the median, so 80% of that. And it's adjusted based on household size. So there's a ton of different programs and activities that can be done. Just the difficult thing with CDBG in general is, it's administratively heavy. And so it's ultimately about who has the capacity to do it, and what the community needs are.
You got another question?
No, go ahead.
The 233, 206 or 306, and that, that is specific to Weed, or is that specific to South County?
That's, that's specific to Weed. So throughout the entire county, in rounds two and rounds three, there's approximately $3 million. And it's sort of, I'm not entirely sure how they built the formulas. For example, Thule Lake has like 670,000 allocated to them, but Siskiyou County has 433. So I wasn't sure how the formulas worked out, but that 233 is specific to Weed.
Okay, thanks. So where is the activity list? Is there a list, such, such thing as a list of...
Yeah, I think, I think the most comprehensive list is what would be called the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability. And HCD publishes that on their website under their, their active programs under CDBG. And so I can, I can forward that to city staff to share, but it basically is grouped into three different buckets of activities: community development, economic development, and public services. So community development activities can range from infrastructure improvements to public facilities that aren't actively performing government, like libraries, or homeless shelters, or things like that. Economic development activities include direct business assistance, financial assistance, and infrastructure for businesses, but that one's tied to job creation for the, for the construction of everything, you know. And then the third are public services, so that includes, like, ambulance services, or meals on wheels, or mobile vaccine provision, or things like that. So, so if you can fit something into one of those buckets, and then tie it to benefiting people who are low to moderate income, you have an activity that's eligible.
So may I ask a question?
Yes.
So you said the activities that are going to be, they're available for anyone low to moderate income, below the $70,000 or whatever it is, right? And so where can, if people are listening, and I'm going to tell somebody, can I tell them to go to the NOFA site to find the activities, and they sign up there if they have access to it? Is that how this is going to be communicated or distributed?
No, so the NOFA is sort of intended for jurisdictions that, who can be the grantees. So, and then, and then the city, the jurisdiction, would apply for activities through HCD. Once those activities are set up and operating, that's when you can do that outreach to the people that'll actually benefit, to get them into that. So, so that activity setup's going to include developing all the application forms, all the program guidelines, things like that. So this is something like, for example, for the subsistence payment, Great Northern Services already has all these things set up. They have the software in place, they have the forms ready to go, they, they know the processes and procedures. So those are sort of what's required to actually operate the program. Residents themselves probably shouldn't be looking at the NOFA, because they can't apply for grants. Only, only cities and counties can.
So the city's going to put something together, because I heard, I heard talking earlier that you said there was no money, but that, was that what we were talking about? There was, there was a questionnaire, and you were saying some of there's, wish you would get a lot of money. Is that the same program that we were talking about earlier between sessions? I'm trying to understand if there's a program that the city's going to administrate, where can people go find out the information? That's all I'm asking.
At Great Northern. They're, they would apply through Great Northern.
Okay, because you're saying that something was given to the city.
Yeah, so, so the cities choose and apply for and, and operate the activities. And so those can, those can be a wide different, they can be like the micro program that we're already doing, they could be the subsistence payments, they could be food bank programs. The cities have to set that up. And then, once they set that up, it's on them to mark, to figure out how to market that and communicate that to their residents. And so that's sort of, that's sort of, like, for example, if we were to do a subsistence payments program, I'm not sure if residents of the city of Weed pay, like, their water bill to the city of Weed. But generally, okay, so generally, what they would do is they put a little, a little flyer in with the next water bill and say, hey, are you, you know, under this income versus this household size? Do you need assistance with utilities? Well, here's a form, here's a, here's a link, here's how you can sign up. And they can, they can respond to that, and Great Northern Services can income-qualify them to make sure they are low to moderate income, and then set them up on vouchers to be able to pay those utilities, as an example.
Yeah, I'm not trying to ask for specifics, but I heard you asked a question, there's 233,000 something available to the city of Weed.
Correct.
So I was asking how to get the information out, and who's it going to, when I haven't heard any steps. And so you just mentioned the steps, the city has to decide where it's going to go. It's not all Great Northern, like you just said, right?
It's available to the community of Weed.
Right, but who says where, where that's going to go within the community? Who makes that decision? The city?
The city. The public.
Set that up with Great Northern. Great Northern will be the people that administer the loan program.
Oh, the city doesn't have any decision process where they should, the money should go within the city?
We've already made those decisions, I believe.
Oh, I've asked that, and they said, I haven't heard an answer where those programs are. Am I missing something?
Who did the activity?
Are we talking about the...
The 233,000, he just mentioned going for the city of Weed. The 233,000 that you just mentioned going for the city of Weed is not all administered by Great Northern, but if it is, does the city have a part of the, say where the money's going? Am I not asking a question?
Is it going to the city of Weed, or is it going to the people of the city of Weed? Is that the confusion?
Yeah, I think what Quentin was saying is, we're going to have to determine as a body where the 233,000 are going to go via a resolution at the next council meeting.
Okay.
That's all I was asking. No one's telling me.
That's our plan, is that it's going to go to the people in our community?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. When might we receive that money?
That is a $64,000 question.
I can, that's what I thought. So there's no reason to start sweating about it right now.
Yeah, so applications aren't due until May 7th. So there's breathing time. Now, I don't want to wait till the last second to get them in. If we can get it in sooner, the money gets here sooner. I'm shooting for a mid-March, early April date to button this all up. Now, in terms of who determines where the money goes, where the public is there to input. And so generally, this hearing would be considered open until a resolution is passed, so people can submit comments in writing. But it's also at the discretion of the city councils. I'm simply proposing some activities that we have the capacity to administer that would be eligible. The city does not have to enter into any of them. I'm just proposing some options in that we're available to administer them.
You're putting out examples.
Exactly.
Okay. It's up to us what we want to do with it.
So my question is, following what Stacy's talking about, being prepared for the resolution. You're going to send a proposed resolution to us to agree to.
To agree to how the money should be divvied up.
So where are you getting your input from? Where it should go?
From the council.
From us. So we should become prepared to play this game properly. We should be prepared to make sure that, or give some direction to it ourselves, as an individual.
So here's the few things that you, as a council, would want to be prepared to do. Figure out, out of that 233-306, where you want to plug it into. You can have up to four activities. One activity is already accounted for in the CV1 program, which is the micro program that the EDC is going to be administering. So you have three more activities that you can choose. The second thing is determining who's going to be managing those programs, whether you're going to be partnering with a nonprofit like us, procuring a private consultant, or administering it in-house if you have the staff capacity in order to do so. So those are, and then, third, you want to look at what are the community needs? And how is that going to dictate where dollars could go? And like I said, this program is set up with a degree of flexibility to where you can authorize this full grant amount for each activity, but when you create the budget, you know, you could slice it in thirds, put a little on this, a little on that. But as you see the program demand, actually tell you what do our residents need, you can shift money from one program activity to the other pretty seamlessly. You would just have to, you know, submit an amendment request through HCD, but you guys would not have to meet again and produce a new resolution in order to authorize that change.
Okay. Any more questions? I got it. I got that figured out.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm good.
You good?
Go ahead, whatever.
Okay. Tim, anything else?
No, I think Quentin's covered it, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Quentin.
Madam Mayor, may I mention when we asked the question "we" on the farmer's market, I would like to mention that the Siskiyou Economic Development Council, along with the Siskiyou Revitalization Network?
That's right.
Is part of that.
It's part of that "we."
It's part of that "we."
They just weren't on the call the other day.
Yeah.
Sandy, Tim, either one, correct me, do I not close this public hearing?
Quentin said it cannot be closed until the resolution.
Until the resolution, okay, that's what I was.
That will allow public, if they want to send some in.
To make comments on it, okay.
We'll continue the public hearing.
Okay, and is the goal to have the resolution by March or April?
I think Quentin's hoping for March.
He's hoping for March, but I mean, we may be able to, like I said, get it in. But I mean, if it's April, that's not, you know, the end of the world. Because he says it's May 7th is the deadline, but we want to get it in as soon as possible.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need a motion for the continuation or not?
Bob? Yes, yeah.
A motion for the continuation of the hearing?
Continuation of the public hearing.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to make the motion to continue the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're good, Bob? We did it right? Okay, thank you very much. Regular, moving on to the regular agenda, Planning Commission. Council will consider appointment to the Planning Commission for a full term ending January 31st, 2025. I know. Will this person even still be alive, then? Did I say that? That was a good one, huh, Craig? Well, he likes to tease me, so it's cool.
About me?
Well, no, they told me that we do. Do we need a motion? Or we just need everybody to agree?
I'll make a motion to the mayor appoint the applicant.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Nicholas for the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Everybody's good with what's on there? No questions?
I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Stacy?
I said aye softly.
Okay. Thank you. Staff reports. Oh, Emily?
Yes.
They would like you to go first.
I have nothing to report.
Craig, you have some good stuff.
I do. I can report. You left off on your announcements on the LTC that you are the...
I left off on yours.
Yeah?
Go ahead.
You are the vice chair.
Vice chair.
Of the LTC.
I know how that rotary stuff works. He just wanted to find you, I know.
Well, I know, but this way she'd get more money, keep it coming to weed.
Right, yeah.
We needed that. This week, we got a letter from the EDA saying that we can award the contract to Timberworks for $5,994,000. And we have like six steps to go through before we can give them a notice to proceed. So hopefully by our March meeting, we'll be able to give the contractor a notice to proceed and start the Vista Drive project.
Perfect.
Is that a two-year project?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask what's first and what's second?
You can, but...
You don't know?
It's going to be what the contractor proposes to us, how he's going to set it up and lay it out. Because it's going to be a nightmare out there with traffic and that kind of stuff, and keeping businesses open, and doing under the freeway, and hopefully the contractor can...
Did we manage to keep the stoplight?
Yes. Stoplight will be at Blackview in Vista.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Is that all?
So I have?
Okay. I know, it's some good stuff. Steve, would you, do you have anything to tell us?
Yeah, me neither.
Okay. Can you hear them okay, Jeremy? Oh, I wanted to make him get to the microphone. All right, go ahead.
A couple weeks ago, Brian and I both attended the Fire Instructor 2 class at the college. The reason that's important is if you're a Fire Instructor 1, you can teach from the book, you know, the fire book. And a lot of the items that we have don't coincide with what's in the book. For example, ladders. We may have different ladders, different sizes, different types. With a Fire Instructor 2, we can make changes to that, which is needed. It goes up to Fire Instructor 3, which we have one person on staff that's a Fire Instructor 3, and that's Ryan Benson, he's one of our volunteer captains. And under him, we can put on totally different classes than what's in the book. That becomes important because we are one of the one entities that are signed up through the college. When we teach at the station, our instructors get paid through the college. So a lot of our instructors are the captains. So we are doing a lot of training. Like tomorrow, we're doing an auto extrication class, and then Saturday, we're doing a rope rescue class. We're doing ladders, I think your son's teaching that one day this month. And then, of course, I'm doing CPR, I have to do CPR every two years with the guys. So we actually get paid through the college. And then part of the money goes to the county fire warden for the training for the county. So it's a win-win for everybody. So this is a way that captains can make money, to just come and share their knowledge and train at the fire station. So with that, I talked to all the captains, and I said, hey, you guys can come do training and get paid now through the college, and it's actually pretty good pay. And in turn, I wanted to take their captain's pay away. They get, they got $540 a year to be a captain for us, and some of them may not have gone on any calls at all, or come in to do any training. And I said, what if we take that money that we paid you and give it to the sleepers for a call? Because forever that I know of, they get $6 to go on a call. And I wanted to increase it to stay competitive with everybody to $12. Like Justina pays $12, I think Mount Shasta pays 10, Dunsmere pays 7. So I worked it out, and I sent it to Tim, and by eliminating the captain's pay, we can ship that money over to the on-call pay, and it would not increase the budget at all. It would be the same budget, and then they'll get paid $12 a call instead of 6. And the captains can go on those calls, too, and they do sometimes. So we have increased that, starting January 1st, this quarter.
This must be vibrant creativity or something.
Well, that $12 a call, if you're there for 20 minutes or if you're there for eight hours, you still only get $12. Okay, just making sure.
Depends on the call. So, you know, we also get paid by EF Recovery, so any traffic accident or hazardous call on the highway, we can charge for that, and the firefighters get paid extra for that. But it's true, we've been on, you know, I've been on an incident, a hazmat incident for eight hours, and some guys were there with me, and they got 12 bucks. I mean, you know, it just happens, and they know that. And some of the calls can be, most of them are around 40 minutes and a half to an hour. Because by the time you do the call, come back to the station, clean up your stuff, put the report in, takes about an hour.
Can I ask a question? With the experience that before I came here, I saw the people on top of streets, those 10 people, wherever they're coming from, they aren't paid through the city of Weed, or they may be, right? It just depends where they're coming from?
What?
There was probably a Weed fire truck, and a Cal Fire fire truck.
It was a white, like a short truck with like a big old back on. I don't want to explain it, but that was at the bottom of the street. And that was, yeah, I don't know, it was CDF.
That's Fire, CDF.
And then right after that, they had a hazmat call. We get charged for hazmat calls, too, extra hazmat bills.
It's a big, it's a lot going on with, because I know Emily explains, the cost comes to the fire department, so I'm always trying to put that into a formula when you share what you're sharing. I still don't have it, but I'm trying to get it. I don't understand where the different pays come from and what we have to pay as a city, but it's split up, and it works every year, right?
Yeah, and remember, this training that we do is required. All this training that we do for the fire department is required for us to do it, to keep them as volunteers. Because they have to have the same training as a regular firefighter.
Paid right.
We do a lot of training. With that, we're going to, we're in negotiations with Cal Fire right now. Hammond Ranch Fire Department has lost their fire chief. Their fire chief is quitting, he's moving, and nobody wants to step up and take it over. So if they don't have a fire chief, then they're not going to have a fire department. If they don't have a fire department, they will no longer be able to have homeowners insurance. We can't let that happen. So they asked us if we'd be willing to step in and help out administratively. So I don't have all the details with me tonight, but I just want to let you know that we're in negotiations with them to probably take over Hammond Ranch Fire Department. I did talk to Tim about it, and as long as it doesn't cost the city any money, I think it's a good plan for both of us. Because they can help us out, too. Not only will we have their employees, but we can train them, but we'll also have their equipment. They do have a water tender, they have a pickup truck for their chief that we can give to Brian, instead of buying them a new pickup truck, saving us $50,000. He can utilize that truck anywhere we want. So basically, what would happen is, they have an operating budget, we would absorb that budget, and then their fire station would become our, to us. But they still want to be called Hammond Ranch Fire Department.
When you said "we," Madam Mayor, I have a question. You said that "we" again. I just want to know, you said "we," can't let that happen. Who's the "we"?
Us, citizens, we can't let that work. We can't let everybody out there lose their homeowners.
They won't lose their homeowner insurance necessarily, but it definitely will increase probably 20%. But once that fire department goes defunct, it will take them over a year plus to get their rating back, if they do get it back at all. So that also is a time thing. And once it goes bust and ISO sees it, ISO doesn't give it back without review. Anyway, I know it's Castella, happened to Castella, took them years to get that back.
So I talked to Chief Adia at Dunsmere, who took over Castella Fire Department. I have been, I talked to her for over an hour yesterday of how that operation happened, make sure we're doing it properly. Also talked to, I was trying to talk to Chief Pappas, but he's been teaching at the college, so they took over Mount Shasta Vista with the contract.
It also impacts all of College, most of College Avenue? All the way up to Edgewood?
All of our borders border there. They only run 71 calls a year, and 65 of those are EMS calls, which we wouldn't respond to. Our goal is to have paramedic sleepers out there, which they used to have, but their current fire chief didn't want to deal with the sleepers, so they got rid of them.
Who was in on this discussion with you? Brian, you?
Brian, myself, actually, Mount Shasta Fire Department was interested, so they came to listen.
The, oh, the district and them are the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was Kent Cunningham.
Okay.
It was the town chief, Phil and Daryl, and Representative from Hammond Ranch.
Oh, was Mello there, or?
Mello.
Okay.
Matt Mello and Rick Joyce.
And who?
Rick Joyce.
Okay.
And you said there's no, I'm just, I'm listening, I'm trying to get this out, so don't think I'm smilling at people. I'm just saying, when you said there's no cost going to be attached to the covership of what Weed would do, your department, Weed Fire Department, it just, it seems so hard to believe, because there's so much cost that always comes out. But you've talked, I'm not asking for explanation, I'm just saying, just from what you said, and we're talking about budget and amounts, and everybody's frowning at me, I don't understand why I frown when I try to say this, it's not clear. I'm just trying to understand if there's any other cost involved. There is none, you're saying.
Correct, we take on their budget.
Yeah, everybody stopped frowning at me when I asked those questions. That's the honest question to ask.
No, no, please.
Well, yeah, they are.
All that information will be detailed, hopefully, in the next...
Stop asking questions.
And none of this will be done without council approval. None of this, so.
I'm hoping to get it together.
Can I ask questions?
To introduce it. I just don't have all the details.
Nobody's frowning at you.
Yes, four people were, I was looking into their eyes. And don't, I'm okay with that. I just want to call attention. You frowned at me when I asked about money, he's explaining they're taking over a relationship or responsibilities. I'm asking, is there any more money involved? That's all. And we haven't decided yet. That's all I need to hear, so stop frowning at me. If it wasn't you, don't be guilty.
And then the last thing is, speaking of ISO, and we just contacted them last week, they are now going through a... them last week. We are now going through an ISO rating update currently. So.
And they know we own that fire tower, right?
I don't know anything yet, because I just got the email.
Okay.
So, we have to work with the city and.
It's not one of the things they actually consider when they do ratings, but it's.
Yeah, so there's a lot of stuff to it.
Yeah.
It's going to take a while. But we're currently at 3, so we want to keep it at 3. I don't think we can go up any more than that right now. But we'll see. You know, we've done some updates Craig has for water systems, so.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe it's, maybe it'll change.
Cool.
And we did get a new fire truck.
Oh, yeah, since the last one?
Yeah.
Yep, it's based on, the 911 dispatch has a big part of it. So, Justin's team is very integral into it as well, as far as, uh, handling calls. And then also, we also have the, uh, we said with the equipment, fire pressure supply, that whole thing to, and the, you know, the fire.
Yeah, unfortunately, our dispatch is too worried, so.
True.
But there's, there's questions.
So, is everybody else's, though?
Yeah. But, so we're doing busy. That's all I have right now.
That was a lot.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's not going on.
I know. Well, it's okay. It's only 20 after 6. We got 10 minutes.
I have a cough, I'm not sick. I got my second COVID shot, it's a side effect. I got some really bad side effects from the second shot.
Okay.
Oh, did you?
I did, I got dizzy, I got massive headache, I got this cough. It's probably starting to go away.
That means it worked.
Yeah.
Oh, Justin, do you have anything to share with us?
Oh, sure. I'm standing up, so I'm yelling over the top. Um, so, we are, we have an RFQ out for multiple, um, communications providers, trying to work out the, um, communications issues we mentioned at the previous budget workshop regarding, uh, the 91, um, well, it's not the 911. 911 is actually upgraded. It's, uh, our outdated radio system and our need for encryption. Uh, right now, we have two responses that have provided quotes, uh, waiting on a third. But, uh, just letting you know that we are working on that to, uh, find some solutions. Does anybody have any questions?
What's the time limit on that? When do you have to have it, when do we have to have it done? When do you have to have?
When I submitted the letter to the state, we have to submit a, a plan on how we are going, or how we are operating actually right now, um, without it. Um, as part of that, you had to have a, a timeframe. I, I gave them a pretty lengthy timeframe and they haven't responded back, um, probably because they have to review every city.
Because everybody gave them a lengthy time?
Every entity has to provide that. So, uh, there's 481 incorporated cities that have to provide law enforcement, not, and 58 counties, not counting every little small district like Shastina as well. So, they have to review those. They haven't responded back. I, I gave them a, uh, timeframe of a couple of years, because I, even once we received a close, we're still at the mercy of the communication provider when we'll be scheduled for, for, in that, those projects. We're counting it as two separate projects. So.
Why two separate projects?
Well, one's the encryption, but we also, we have a, part of the encryption, you're going to have to upgrade your outdated radio system.
Oh, okay.
For 1995, so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, cool. Thank you.
And the, congratulations. I think there's a new dispatcher that was hired. I saw it on media.
We did, we were, we filled a spot, then we took the dispatcher, made him an officer. Um, we were able to do that. We were able to quickly fill out a spot, which was nice. And this person comes in with, uh, some, a pretty good amount of experience. Um, they actually have, dispatchers just like officers receive, uh, certificates as they progress through their career. This person actually has an advanced certificate where most people that come in are brand new. So, we're hoping that she'll be able to go through the training process relatively quickly and, and do functioning on her own.
Oh, good. That's good news.
Congratulations, awesome.
Um, Bob, anything? Nope. Sandy?
Nothing to report.
Okay, your turn.
Uh, just real quickly, I just want to let everybody know, we've been in communication, myself, uh, Craig Sharp, Paul Ruder, uh, with Servitas and discussions with building the new dorms. Um, we kind of had to be the bad guys the last couple of, uh, calls, because I think they were all really stoked until they found out, until we found out how much, um, they were going to be, uh, they hadn't given us the numbers yet on the, uh, water and sewer, uh, usage. And once we got the numbers for that, because I think it was about 400 and some beds and, and it was, it's a lot of lot, which is going to be good for the community, because if we can get the kids at the dorms, that frees up a lot of rental properties here in town for, uh, our, our working folks. Um, so, but we are going to be meeting with them again next week to try to talk about some capacity issues and see if we may be able to clear those hurdles. Because, I mean, we, we, we don't want to just be the bad guys. We want to be the good guys that help get it done, so.
Well, I know, but we can't give things away.
No, we can't. We're not, uh, it, it may be a great account for us too, because it'll be using a lot of water and sewer, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but we want to make sure, just, it's the capacity issue and that.
Were the numbers about what you thought when you and I were talking about it? Was that about, were you about right?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
So, anyway, but it's, it's, you know, we're, we're trying to be realistic and, and, and get the project done, so.
Well, I think, I mean, I've talked to some people over there, and I think they're concerned about whether or not we can handle it too.
True.
So, I don't think anybody, did anybody act surprised?
Yeah, I think, I think they did, and they said maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, they did?
I, I, I think they kind of somewhat maybe put the cart before the horse as far as, you know, uh, there was a lot of talk about design and this and that. But then, you know, I finally waved my hand and said, well, how much water are you going to use? How much sewer are we going to, uh, be expecting? And it's not so much the water is not a, an issue, it's the sewer.
Yeah.
Uh, the capacity on the treatment, so.
So, are you saying they didn't anticipate the impact fees or the impact on our community and the extra costs?
I, I, I think this group, this development group, they do a lot of these all over the nation. And I'm sure most of these are in cities bigger than Weed and don't have the issues of that type of capacity. And, uh, and unfortunately, we did. But, you know, we've got a good relationship working with their group, with their architects, their engineers. So, again, uh, we're going to have our third Zoom call here in about, uh, I think next week. And, yeah, next Tuesday, so. But we're staying on top of it. We're trying to come up with some solutions. It's going to be a win-win for everybody, because we, we really want that project to happen. So, I think it'd be a, a great thing for the community too.
Are we updating our sewer, uh, plan already? I mean, for the future, don't, aren't we supposed to be looking at that?
Yeah, right now, we're, we've started a, um, study of sewer plant for the upgrades. We, we received the grant. Um, so it's going to be a, a planning study to see what we need to upgrade the sewer plant, which there will be no money to upgrade it.
Okay.
And it's going to take us over a year, because we need a year's worth of data out of some of the, um, sampling wells that we've drilled out there. So, it's going to be, you know, before construction, it'd probably be six years before we could find funding and that kind of stuff.
Six years? How soon before COS is, wants to put their?
They want, they, they'd like to start construction soon and have it done in about two years. So, uh, but, like I said, we're trying to come up with some solutions, um, to, to increase our capacity that might be able to, to do that with treatment options, not as much as the capacity issue, so. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we will adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Closed session.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session.
Do we have to further on?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, the, the entry.
Any opposed?